Good evening, everybody. It's six thirty. It's January tenth, twenty twenty four. And I am come to order the Wood Creek Regular City Council Meeting for January. So with that done, I ask everyone to rise. We'll have a moment of silence in space, standing for the pledges, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for the liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. I'm sure that part of the moment is time for a brief council meeting, so we'll just skip right to it. Would the roll call please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Jeff Letts go.
Here.
Mayor Lieutenant Deborah Hines.
Here.
Councilmember Lenea Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Grimmer.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Hamrick.
Here.
Councilmember Krista Richardson.
Here.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. And so we do have a couple of comments over here. Marty, it's on now.
Let's get to talk about that later. Let's get to talk about that later.
You just said whether it was like beginning or before the agenda. I'm not sure what agenda I didn't want you to speak on.
Drainage. Drainage.
A drainage? I mean, you're welcome to go now.
Okay.
Actually, it's probably good without the engineer.
Yeah, I see there's. Since I decided what I wanted to talk about, I realized that I may be not knowing exactly what's going on on your side of the fence. So anyway, what I wanted to tell you was that we have been regarding with the drainage problem we've been having with our house since the streets were for them. And our fear that it could get worse, we decided to go ahead and get some bids and maybe that would get some ideas too about what we can do about it to fix it. And we had two today and we plan to get more next week. And so I thought it was very interesting what kind of ideas. I won't get into that, don't have time, that we came up with, but I'll be willing to share our bids and advice that we got. Think that might be real helpful. That's what I'm saying.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure that our request for the signage in front of the tree islands just kept alive. I was surprised to not see it on the agenda today. I don't know what's being done with it. But we have to deal with it every day and like tonight backing out at my driveway. It's hard to see that hole in my driveway. So I don't know. You know, last time I felt a little wait for council member Grummer to get back and go, I don't know where that stand.
You'll get a statement in fact.
I reviewed all of the signs throughout the entire city. So on the next agenda, I will be submitting an item that goes in this Friday. So we will have discussion at that point in time. I did notice some reflective tape was put on your sign. Did y'all do that or was that the sitting? Someone did it.
No.
Yeah.
It wasn't us.
Okay, someone added reflective tape.
If I wanted to end up on driveway.
Are you, which?
Is it true?
Yeah, champion word.
Yeah, number one. We would just try to.
You're on the first one or the second tree?
The first island, it's you.
Okay, so the second one is the one that someone installed reflective tape.
Oh, okay.
So that's all I can say at this point in time because it's up to council to discuss further information. But you should see an item in the packet next on January.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I just don't want it to get dropped. You know, we're upset and dealing with it. And just another comment, I don't understand why there are not no signage in the big island. Or I understand if I'm understanding correctly, where it has had a tree here, why don't we have signage there? On Wood Creek Drive.
We can't really, we can't really discuss those public comments.
I just want to bring that up. It doesn't make sense, but we're having to deal with that.
Point of fact is all these things have been discussed and like we talked about it yesterday.
Uh huh.
It's not our radar.
Okay, that's all. I just wanted to be sure that it didn't go bad.
Sure.
Okay, that's all.
We don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Our first, first order, visit consent agenda.
I need that we approve the consent agenda. Items one through five.
I second that. Jumping to discuss, so we'll go on then.
I just have one comment about it. And it is that when I originally saw number five, I was somewhat upset. And I don't like to use that word easily because I like masonry on the front of buildings. However, because of current state law, we cannot regulate that. And therefore, we don't get to say whether or not somebody has masonry on. I'd like to put their arms out most of the day, but I can't. So we just have to go with this.
Yeah, we haven't been able to do it for a few years. And the ordinance never got changed. So this is just bringing the ordinance up.
Yeah, just for clarification, there was, there was public hearings both in P and Z and council on this item. It just never got brought to council for a month. So we haven't met all the requirements.
So they've just wrapped it up. But that's no sign for the. I like the masonry. All right, city manager rule, you're in review.
We need a vote on the consent agenda.
Awesome, very good.
Mayor Lieutenant Deborah Hines.
Aye.
Councilmember Lenea Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grimmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hamrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Krista Richardson.
Aye.
Thank you.
It's a consent agenda, they all consent here. Okay, thank you for the vote. I'm sorry, I was getting off on the next. So anyway, city manager rule.
Happy New Year. This is the first meeting of a new year. Last year, as everybody should know, a lot happened in the city that y'all should be very proud of. Y'all are very active and we got a lot accomplished. There's a lot more to accomplish in the city. And so I'm looking forward to this year as well to being as productive as last year. What I wanted to do is just do a, I'm gonna make it as short as I can, but just kind of highlight some of the milestones that we have come across this past year. I didn't realize just the, it took a whole page. Not that it was gonna be maybe a half a page, but that's, that's a whole page of the big milestone, not just the day to day work. But if you remember, we started out with winter storm Myra there at the end of January, January thirty first, February first. When we had all the trees down with the ice, not counting the golf course, their cleanup that they had afterwards. We did two hundred and thirty two dumpsters, six thousand seven hundred two yards. Waste connections averaged eight loads a day, removing the tree brush for twenty nine days. So they did eight loads for twenty nine days. It cost us about two hundred fifty thousand. We have been fast tracked with the FEMA reimbursement. We have already passed FEMA, now we're teed them to get the money of about a hundred and ninety one thousand. So yeah, Myra, I will never name my kid Myra. I'm sorry. We did, we got our financial statements and everything was, was good on our financial statements. We got a clean bill of health. Remember, we sent out a RFP for cul-de-sacs, just doing our cul-de-sacs and we received no bids. So we combined the cul-de-sacs with the other roads and we sent out another RFP to get the roads done. We participated in the first open market sale of three point million, million in bonds, which was very successful. The all-in tick, which is what your interest on your bonds is, plus all expenses with the lawyers, all the people that get their hand in it. Was four point six percent was the coupon, but the average coupon of the actual bond were four point three nine percent. So even with the rising interest rates, we came out really good in our flaws. The city also received the first bond rating that I know that they have ever had, which is A1 by News Investor Service. And then we did issue the bonds, like I said, in a very successful open market sale. We paved the roads for two point five million, so we came in about a million dollars less than what was projected at the time. So we have some money in the kitty for road maintenance. If that is not spent, we could use that to, in ten years, to pay back a million of our bonds, we still have it. We also put in last year with the help of council member Grummer for the grant for paving Deerfield. It has been a long process to, to do that. I am happy to say that over Christmas, I got a call from Sid Miller. Actually, Sid Miller personally called me and told me he was writing the check for a half a million dollars. So Deerfield has been approved. I will be tending a, to sign the contracts with CDBG on Wednesday. After that, we'll start the process of engaging with the contractors to get started. It will be a little while before the contracts do start paving or actually the draining work to start. But we have been approved, it's in process. Be patient, it's coming next couple of months. So Deerfield will be paid with grant money. We also had the citywide ground sale. We had over, made over two hundred dollars for the park, if you remember, for the Parks Board. If you remember, we, we put together a map and put the houses that signed up for donation and there's forty houses that signed up. We were planning that again this year and look forward to a bigger and better success. We also had the bulk pickup. We had, and then we had, I think twice in addition to the winter storm pickup, we had two brush picks up, pick up, pick up as well. And we're gonna keep on doing that. We also passed the balanced budget, which is great. That went over pretty, pretty well. We also, we received the, I didn't remember this, but we actually received the POSAC grant the first of last year of two hundred thousand for the parks. And since then, we now have the gazebo at the triangle. We have a wonderful place, great escape at Creek Sea, Creek, excuse me, Creek Sea, whatever park. And we're working on Augusta Park with the forest stuff, the growth stuff and the natural.
Master natural.
Master natural.
Correct, and continue of that. So we, we did the parks as well for two hundred thousand dollars that we got from Hayes County. We also finished up or re-signed the actual franchise agreement that hasn't been in place for a long time. Today, I know it's a couple of days later, but we're getting a new city engineer that we've been talking about for a while. We also hired a new city attorney. And in, in the meantime, also had a interim city attorney. And we increased the presence on social media with Facebook Next Book, Next Door, excuse me, and city text and email. So that's all we did this year, which is last year.
Oh, the last year if you did.
Yeah, the last year, y'all should be committed on, on a job well done. And I look forward to working with y'all this year to get just as many, if not more, things done.
Oh man, I'm gonna take the year off.
No, you know, the thing at the radio station that Jeff is on in the mornings, they keep on saying that we're not gonna do anything for you. So we really have to step up our game and tell them.
They don't, they don't know this council.
Yeah, I know. So yeah, it's gonna be a good year and we already have a lot of things in the, in the works that we can't talk about yet. But yeah, it's just gonna be as busy as this year.
Could I get a report or could we get a report regarding development that's been happening in our ETJ? I keep getting on something media, I get tagged about what's going on here and I know nothing.
Future agenda. I will do that at the next agenda meeting.
Great, thank you.
Good, thank you. Thank you very much. Good year. All right, moving on, there are no hot committees, special committees, special orders, unfinished business on the agenda. We'll move to the regular agenda. It's my pleasure to introduce city manager rule again to greet our, our new day generals.
Yeah, we went out for an RFP for city engineers to, to take over for our, one that we had. We received five RFPs back from the different engineers. City council, each city council member rated the proposals that we got. And I tallied those results. I was initially going to bring in two firms to talk to us and have you decide, much like we did the new city attorney. Thankfully, I guess for them, they, it wasn't even close who y'all chose and who y'all wanted to represent you through their RFP. And that was Pretty Little Turk Engineering Group. It wasn't even close. They were well ahead of everybody else. There were three companies in the middle and the one at the end. And that scoring sheet is in the packet if you want to look at the, the average score of, of each engineer. So I wanted to bring them into here today so y'all could have an interaction with them before you hopefully do a motion for their, to enter, to enter, to enter a service agreement. So I'm gonna give them just a couple of minutes to introduce themselves, introduce their firm. And then if council has any questions that you would like to present to them or just questions or concerns, that would be a, a great time to do that. And then that's it. So introduce Mr.
All right. Where would you like me to stand?
Right there because you can actually sit down and it actually does better because if you stand up to get your. Yeah, so just sit down and talk, talk normal and that's the camera right there in front of you.
All right.
It's perfect.
Thank you very much for having us here tonight. We're, we're very pleased to be here and, and thanks for the, the high ranking. I'll pass it on to the market department. So my name is Tom Turp and I'm a business partner here, Gary Freeland. Gary and I have been working together for the last ten or twelve years serving small cities in this, in this area. And we formed Pretty Little Turk Engineering about four years ago. We're in our fifth year of business. We have grown every year. We've been profitable every year. And we have a lot of pretty happy clients. So we, we feel a little bit about what we are doing. We made early on a strategic decision to concentrate and focus on being consultant city engineers for smaller cities and, and performing municipal engineering services. So that is our focus. You guys are the people that we serve. We, we really don't do any development work. We don't try to please everybody in the world. We concentrate on making smaller cities better places to be. So we're very focused on small cities and, and therefore, we understand a lot of the problems that smaller cities face. We know that your politics are very, very close to your citizenry. When something happens down the street that we're doing, you hear about it. In fact, I was in Sunset Valley one day and looking at some project issues down in the park and the police showed up. The guy just rolled down his window and he, he looked at me and he said, okay, no problem. And let, I don't know what that was about. Until about three months later and I was talking to one of the council people and it's, oh yeah. Yeah, they see a stranger, they're calling the police. Anyway, we understand how close the combat can be. So we pay attention to what's going on in the communities that we serve. We try to be in tune with your culture and your, your politics and, and your needs. We think we do that better than, than most engineers. Most engineers are a bunch of nerds and they, they just come up with plans and they don't really consider the impacts and how people cherish their trees and their driveways and their front yards and what have you. We pay a lot of attention to that. One of our biggest challenges, what I, what I would call just the political acceptability of a solution that we, we bring in. It's really easy to say from an engineering point, this is what you should do. But when you, when you consider how your citizens might react, how you might react and the impacts and what have you, that can be an entirely different picture. And so that's one of our biggest challenges and, and we lean on you to decide for your citizen, what is probably acceptable. But we also consider that while we're developing solutions for you. If you read our SOQ, I apologize, it's a lot, there's a lot of information in there. You asked for a lot of stuff, so I gave you a lot of stuff. But it's really hard to write that in a very entertaining and exciting way. This is boring civil engineering stuff, but hopefully you got a good flavor of, of our firm and what we can do and how we, how we approach and how the, the service of our clients, but how we approach to, you know, solving, helping you solve your, your problem. So there's a lot of information in there. Please ask me a lot of questions. I would much rather respond to your questions than sit here and talk about how, how great, you know, Gary and I are. Because that's a lot more fun for us. Gary, do you wanna add anything before we do the Q and A?
As you can see, I was saying. I'm talking.
So just a little bit about Gary and I, as I said, we've been working together for a while and we, we have a lot of common thoughts on integrity and conflicts of interest and how to do engineering. And so it turned out to be a really good partnership. I'm more of the outside guy. I'm the guy who's listening to your needs and trying to bring a solution that works for you. Trying to get the work under contract. And then Gary's kind of the inside guy. He spends time getting out the projects and preparing documents and doing quote, the work. That's generally how it works, but there's plenty of crossover. Him and I are in the office every day. We're very active in what goes on in our office. We, we are principals, but we're also down and dirty engineers, as you can tell with the, the boots in our informal dress. We were prepared to be out in the field at one part of the day and then be in front of the council in the evening. So we love that. We absolutely love what we do. So with that, I'm gonna just open it up to whatever questions you wanna have. Yes, sir.
Question, mention of the statement, and you know, you mentioned your, your proposal among the, the five. And I only really speak for myself, but you know, a couple of things that really stood out for me and, and drove my rankings was, one, you're in a small town yourself, so you kinda, you kinda get it. And then second, you took the time to read our comprehensive plan and to look at our website and to, and to research the city and not just cut and paste from, you know, other proposals. I mean, it was, it was obviously crafted very carefully, which is an extension of what I assumed the work you did.
Yeah.
So anyway, that's what impressed me.
The, the discussion that you had when you decided to go out for an RFP was extremely valuable to me because through the discussion, I, I learned what you were looking for in engineering. And after I, you know, watched that video, I knew I could, we were a really good fit. And my job in the SOQ was to make sure that, you know, I matched up what you think you wanted and needed with things that we can do in our experience. That's, that's all I did, but thank you.
I just got a comment similar to this. I found your submission really entertaining in that you were the one firm that seemed to know the difference between Wood Creek and Dallas.
Yeah, it's interesting you say that because I'm in my forty first year and I've served cities of all sides, Houston, Dallas, Austin, San Antonio. And I've just become very comfortable with the smaller cities. I just, I see the results of my work a lot sooner. I can, I can read faces and understand that, hey, I'm succeeding, I'm making these people happy or I'm not. I mean, I just, it's, it's just where I like to be. Gary came from more of a development environment, but we converted him just as soon as we possibly could. And I know he enjoys it very, very much himself. Thank you.
Well, if I wasn't ready to hire you before, the fact that you took the time to watch the video where we debated about what we were looking for in, in needing a new attorney, not attorney, engineer. I really. That, that means a lot to me personally because the videos are tedious and so far, you know, you don't always get that kind of customer service. So thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. And no, the, the discussion that occurs and what we get out of it is very important for, for us in terms of keeping in tune with you all. As I said before, an engineering solution can look great to us and horrible to you. And we know to be successful, we've gotta make it look good for, for everybody. So those kind of conversations really, really help.
We've gone through this, this sort of thing in the last year with hiring a new city attorney. And, and I think perhaps this kind of we've learned from some of the mistakes that were made in the past as far as who we had, are, nothing against our interim city attorney, but previous to that. And also as far as the city engineer, I, I hope we've learned from our mistakes. Just one question, how many associates do you have other than you guys? Could you?
We have seven, seven, seven of yours.
And they're, they're fully accountable to you, it sounds like.
Yes.
I say that because previously, and I may be up for slander, but oh well. They were not responsive when the time came, the, the certain things, as they were coming down the pipe. I think one of them was, was our, our road, the contract that we had, they, they, they didn't redo it as well as, as they could have. And, and we were kind of stuck with what we got because they didn't do their, well, in my opinion, humble opinion. The same thing goes now is that we, we had the same needs as far as the importance of things as a big city. And, and we just hope that, that our relationship is gonna be very impactful with integrity on the front burner.
Thank you for those comments. And like I said in, in our SOQ, I'm, I'm the city engineer, I'm the main point of contact. I'm, I'm the guy that you reach out to first with whatever your needs might be, whether that be a project or a complaint or whatever. I'm, I'm the guy. That doesn't mean you're not gonna see Gary because you are. Gary's gonna be, you know, getting the workout and there's gonna be plenty of interaction with, where we interact with the city, particularly with, with Kevin. But it's, it's my job to make sure that we're in tune with you, what you need and we make you happy and we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. I have a cell phone, I, I answer it twenty four hours a day. I'm taking calls as late as ten, eleven o'clock at night from, from mayors, by the way. Very good with responding to email. We have a, we have a rule at the office that, you know, we don't leave unless your emails are entered and your, your voicemails are, are returned. So we pride ourselves on being very responsive to your needs, whatever they might be.
And to add that, Tom, as well as I and all of our staff, we don't have office phones, we have cell phones. So when you call, you're not calling and answering. So when you call, you're not calling the answering service. If we're not picking up, it's cause we're on the other line or whatever. So, I mean, that's something we thought would be good. There are no further questions, there are kind of motion, uh, as Mr. Grummer.
I move, we direct city staff to enter into service agreement with Cleveland Tuck Engineering Group for city engineering services for the city of Wood Creek.
Oh, negative. Councilmember Lenea Bailey?
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grummer?
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hambrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Krista Richardson?
Aye.
And Mayor Pretend Deborah Hines?
Aye.
Thank y'all very much.
Good, Kristen, thank you.
We're excited, we hope we start songs on your phone.
He's very, very nice.
I'll give you a phone call.
If you don't mind with that wrong date, um, I don't know, but, uh, you're gonna be.
Yeah, I'll call you tomorrow morning.
It's Charlie, right?
Yes.
In Florida?
Yeah.
Thank you so much. I, I'm a little newer to this job.
All right, so number seven, this gets into a reaction for council members that make our not, member nominations new or reappointment that will be on the, the list. So, um, there's no, no real, real, real key to it, business. Um, there's a list of the open positions. Um, and there are, um, I mean, we can take it, you know, basically one at a time. The two new, uh, councilmembers, Councilmember Richardson and Councilmember Hines newly elected, um, would be the, the first to, um, to fill any spots.
I did have a, a question, if you don't mind. I was told by residents that they, um, deposited their application for the, um, Platinum Panel, and it is not in this packet. And with Robert, Robert Tensman submitted his application on January 3rd, which is after the agenda deadline. So if you, uh, if you wanna consider him, I'd like to make copies, you know, the application.
Yeah.
He's interested in ordinance review and Platinum mode, just let y'all know.
About a little bit? Good guy.
He's overly qualified for several positions. His history, just while we wait, um, he worked in the water quality field for a very long time for CCQ and lead. Uh, so he will be an asset to the city specifically on Platinum Panel. I'm excited to hear that he is also interested in ordinance review though, that was new information from him. Uh, so that's kind of a tough, tough decision there.
I will make these back because the information on his application is not redacted. Please do not write this off as information now.
They'll get that, so.
Well, it just can't be publicly distributed with councilmembers.
I think, yeah, I feel more comfortable if it was up there.
Well, ordinance review, um, we have, you know, Mr. Miller, Mr. Franco, Duncan, um, which leaves, um, the Randy Renter position and the Donna Hector position. So basically where you, we see fully, we're just going to insert Richardson, you know, for what it's worth. So, um, I'll turn to you, where Pretend you have.
Oh, gosh, okay, um. It's like, I feel like maybe we should go by board, or are we just gonna?
No, I am going by board, I'm talking about the ordinance review.
Oh, okay.
Your, your slot on the ordinance review.
Okay, uh, at this time, considering we, um, only have the one application for it, I would like to decline nomination there at this time and continue to seek, uh, applicant.
Councilmember Richardson?
Um, I'm in the same boat basically as, uh, Ms. Hines, that at this time I'll have to decline the nomination and we may seek. I do that role.
Okay. So, um, I, there were no alternate members, you know, that, that popped up either, so I'm not in any better shape on, on any of these for ordinance review. Um, Mr. Miller, did you get any, any response? I know that you reached out as well.
No.
Okay, so, um, we'll, we will, um, roll up proceedings. I, I don't think the ordinance reviews, they don't, we're gonna have.
Well, I have a question. In the past, there have been some discussion about the appropriateness of a person serving on more than one body. I know we've really only had one person do that. If council is okay with Mr. Tensman serving on two, then I would be willing to make a recommendation for him to also serve on ORC, pending he is okay with serving on both. Is that something that we find acceptable?
I don't have any problem with people serving on multiple.
Okay, then I will retract my statement and move that we appoint Mr. Tensman to ORC with the understanding that he is on board with both, but my primary choice for him won't be the Platinum Panel.
I'll second that motion for you.
So obviously that's more for him than us.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but, uh, but, so we have that, that motion on the floor and still handed. Um, so the only, the only movement we'll make on the ordinance review being made this time would be to appoint, um, Mr. R Tensman, uh, to that, to that group in the, a position, um, that Randy Renter had. So do we need to?
Can we go board by board?
No, it just, it just, it just jumped over to Platinum Panel on the, the process of naming one person to two. But currently we're only naming.
I'm only naming him on ORC with the ending that I will.
Yeah, we'll come back to it.
Yeah.
So we'll vote on, on the ORC.
Okay, Councilmember Chris Grummer?
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hambrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Krista Richardson?
Aye.
Mayor Pretend Deborah Hines?
Aye.
Councilmember Lenea Bailey?
Aye.
Thank you.
Beautiful. All right, so Carson Recreation Board, our next, next one, we have, um, Ruth Ann Gilbert staying on. Uh, there was, um, Councilmember Bailey's position, Jeff Van Camp, Brummer, and Cody Abney, Hambrich. Um, that leaves, um, the, uh, Rollings physician and the, um, Maurer physician. Um, Becky Denton also put in a, an application now. Um, it's my understanding from Pat that he wants to stay on, um, for the time being.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and sort of see the, see this to a conclusion.
Yes, sir.
So just know that, um, if you, if you select, uh, Pat Rollings as, as your, um, as your appointment, then we're gonna be going back to the well probably in a few months, just, just so you know.
Seems like it would be a good, um, alternate consideration. And considering there's no application for him in the packet, I'm not really sure it's appropriate to consider appointing him non-alternate as we require an application for consideration. Is there an application on file for him?
We have one, uh, but he decided later to stay on the board, so.
He's saying, um, they're saying he says it's an appointment?
Uh-huh.
That he should have one or five. He can't be voted in because he doesn't have one.
Then we can't vote Tensman in, cause we have a copy of, um.
No, we have his current application in front of us, we can vote him in. Did Pat Rollings submit an application be considered for appointment for this term?
That is what I'm currently wishing for these cases for.
I think with the understanding that, you know, he wants to complete, you know, the work that he's, that he's been doing, you know, alternates, I don't, I don't think he's gonna be insulted or anything by, by an alternate physician.
Okay.
I, I don't know, we didn't talk about it.
I would be comfortable with considering him an alternate without an application, but, um, especially with the understanding that he's considering leaving, you know? So, uh, for full member, I would like to move to appoint Elizabeth Maurer.
I'll second.
Okay, any conversation? All right, so let's go ahead and do, um, Krista, you're, I mean, we've got applications for Monica and, and Becky, both serving as alternates. Um, I have a little personal experience on this one, and I'm pretty sure Monica would be happy saying, "Oh man."
Okay. I'd like to move to appoint, um, not the Vasco, is he helping? Oh, so I would like to move to appoint, um, Becky Denton as a full member.
I second.
And, um, then I will, um, ask that we appoint.
You're on the next agenda.
Yes.
Oh, I'm a different.
Sorry, sorry, point of reference.
Don't interrupt my feelings, I want to be part of the team.
Sorry, Jeff.
Okay, all right then, we'll just vote on the members then.
Hey, Councilmember Bob Hambrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Krista Richardson?
Aye.
Mayor Pretend Deborah Hines?
Aye.
Councilmember Lenea Bailey?
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grummer?
Aye.
Um, okay, so we'll move to the plan, the zoning commission. Um, we have, um, this is, I'm, I'm, I'm.
You, um, Mr. Mayor, um, you.
I know this is mine.
This is yours, yes.
And I'm just, I'm just, no, what I was looking at was the left-hand column where we have no staggering of, um, or, or extremely little staggering.
Yes, I know.
Of the positions, how do we, how do we fix that?
So, if I may, um, five, P and Z are three-year terms?
Right, but.
Part of how that happened was we had somebody who moved from an alternate, who was Lydia Johns, up into a full-term member partway through. That's where some of that changed, I guess she took some, I'd have to go through my paperwork.
There were also several resignations in the same year.
Yeah.
And also Mayor Whitehead did not make Chris on here a full member.
That was.
Mayor Vasco.
I'm just went with previous paperwork, I can show up after the meeting.
No, I'm just letting you know, we did that since you didn't here.
That's, you know, that's a little, but, um, but I, I am concerned that in, at the end of this year, you know, we'll have like, no people on the, I mean, it's like, it'd be, it'd be, I'll, I'll talk to, I'll talk to Andy and see if he's got some ideas on what we can do. But you can go in and, and, you know, ask people to serve a longer term or a shorter term in order to get the, um.
Lydia auto re-upped, she should have been reviewed last year, and y'all did such planning zoning last year. So I guess she automatically stayed on. Um, Chris?
But, but Lydia does has turned in 22, so it's a three-year term, you're like on that 25.
Okay, so that can be.
Right.
And the, the ideal goal eventually is to bring the Platinum Panel in, into performance with the other advisory boards. With that being said, we just haven't prepared that ordinance yet. And then we'll have to get our current city attorney to weigh in on how that would impact terms. The previous city attorney said it was retroactive. So we'll see how, how that plays out when that agenda item comes up. So that might resolve some of this.
All right. All right, so, um, I will just go down the list and ask that we appoint, um, or look, we don't have to appoint Camera Tomas, Lydia or Andy, because they're, they stay on, um. But Chris, this needs to be reappointed or to be.
Chris resigned.
Yeah, it said, okay, reappointment needed, so it's not, uh, we're, we're, in other places it just says a vacated position, this says reappointment needed, so I was confused.
What copy were you looking at? Because it was changed last week. If that's something I've printed out for you?
Probably.
Then that's, that, this document's changed since then.
Okay, so we, we need a, um, so.
This is from the packet.
So, Josh, I'm, I'm curious, do we need to just include also expiration dates? Because they're, they're going to have further, because there's nothing here as far as groups on the ground wall.
Yes, on the left-hand side.
Yeah, left-hand column is, is their expiration, that's it, yeah. But, um, but anyway, so, um, so I would, I would recommend that we elevate Carson Bloodso to the, um, uh, full position.
Second?
At some point, then we have to, will we open, open discussions to the second?
Oh, yeah.
There was a second, there was a second.
Yes, there may.
So now what we have to also consider is all five of them to expire, uh, next year doesn't really conform.
No, like Carson Bloodso being appointed today, if we vote yes, his term will then be three additional years.
One, now we have one or two others that we have to change. Well, we, we decided that Lydia Johns is actually in 25.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we have a 25, we have, uh, a 26, and, uh, three 24s.
Okay.
Um, which I still, you know, it's like, that still puts a, you know, bubble on the end of this year. Um, but, um, but, you know, we can do work with this, you know?
That would fit with standard voting practice though. Meaning three councilmembers will be up for election this year.
Yeah, but that's, you know, on two-year terms, that's really handy, on three-year terms, it, it mixes it up a little bit, you know?
No, I understand, hopefully we bring this ordinance into con, you know?
Yeah, we can, we can.
Yeah.
Take a look at that, but I, you know, I, Andy and I have been trying to be for a few weeks and just having to get together, so I'll, I'll keep trying to. See, get some of this big, especially on, on the councilmembers. But anyway, so I, we can take a vote on the Carson Bloodso.
Uh, Councilmember Krista Richardson?
Aye.
Mayor Pretend Deborah Hines?
Aye.
Councilmember Lenea Bailey?
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grummer?
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hambrich?
All right. All right, moving on to the Platinum Roads panel. Um, we have had, um, had a party resignations on this, on this panel. And I think that's primarily because they got all those darn roads paved. And it's just like, my work here is done, right? So there's still, there's still work to be done, um, long-term.
We're in the process of kind of restructuring, and that will be on the agenda next time.
Okay, so Deborah and I have been working on. A real update back, because there's remaining work to be done.
Mm-hmm.
And the kind of people that want to be on the roads, um, not necessarily as enthusiastic about the other thing.
Sure, of course.
So, um.
It's understandable.
I think this is kind of in limbo. We still have Rogers Folds. And he's a really good guy.
Yeah, I brothers.
Yeah. And then we were thinking about.
Biggs is. Biggs' term expired, but he was, but he billed an expired term, so he's, he's completing that term.
Hmm.
So he would be, uh, reappointed to twenty-five, would that, would that be correct?
Hmm.
I mean, if, if.
We have two applicants this evening, but we have Robert Tinsman and Craig Biggs.
And then, um, clear on this map, um, council member Bailey and myself move to also fill the vacancy at some point. So would you agree with that? I'm sorry. According to this.
Um, oh, oh, yeah, because you do have, yeah, absolutely, I'm sorry.
Council member Bailey and myself need to fulfill this position, so we need to look and.
Now, everybody needs a filled position except for council member Hamper.
Yes, that's essential, so.
So, council member Richardson, council member Brummett, council member Bailey, council member Hines, I'll need a nomination.
You all have a responsibility, and, and then I have the alternate. So, um, for the, for the two, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just, uh, because there's this restructuring in process, it might be wise to wait until that's approved. Because, um, that way the members know what they're, they're proposed to do.
The only, the only, you know, sort of flip side on that is if, if, uh, like, Mr. Tinsman, you know, if he's, if he's appointed to one of the positions. You know, he might like having a say in what his positions are doing, you know, so, so there's, there's an argument both ways, I accept your point.
I have not spoken to Mr. Biggs. I understand he's my nomination. He came highly recommended by people I respect, so I. Uh, felt comfortable nominating him without knowing him. However, I did personally speak to Mr. Tinsman, um. In the past year, on many occasions, but specifically about his application for this, and in our conversations, I did alert him to the fact of. Um, the projects that were being considered for that panel, and he was interested in on board. So I can confidently say that I don't believe hi- his, um, approval would be wavering if, if that restructuring occurs. Um, I just might, I just don't know which one he might pick if he, if he, you know, if he's nominated to vote. But I would like to nominate Mr. Tinsman to the Platinum Roads panel this evening.
Okay.
Okay, and, um, you want to default to, um, to nominating Mr. Biggs?
Yes, I would like to move to appoint Craig Biggs as a full member of the Platinum Roads panel.
Okay.
Okay. All right, but, uh, we will take it under, but, and so when, if we can pull the, the group together, um. Like, the first time we can do it.
Perhaps we could ask them to attend for that agenda item. Because we can't really privately discuss it with three of them.
Right, right, okay. Okay, so let's, uh, we can vote on these two nominations then. Or.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just the thing.
Voting on the acceptance of Mr. Biggs being reappointed as a Platinum Roads panel member. Council member Lenea Bailey.
Aye.
Council member Chris Grimmer.
Aye.
Council member Bob Hambert.
Aye.
Council member Krista Richardson.
Aye.
Mayor Lieutenant Deborah Hines.
Aye.
All right.
And voting to nominate Mr. Sorry, I'm gonna kill his name, Mr. Tinsman. And was nominating Mr. Tinsman to the Platinum Roads panel this evening. Mayor Lieutenant Deborah Hines.
Aye.
Council member Lenea Bailey.
Aye.
Council member Chris Grimmer.
Aye.
Council member Bob Hambert.
Aye.
Council member Krista Richardson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Um, last group we'll work with is the tree board, and we are, um. Uh, council members Bailey and Hambert's members remain, you know, on the board. Um, we've got, uh, Chairwoman Ramos, uh, and that would be the Richardson slot. We've got, uh, McGellarroy, uh, in the Hines slot. And, um, we have a vacated position in Dorothy Asian, um, and Council member Brummer.
I move that we nominate Jacob McGellarroy to the tree board.
A second.
As the only arborist on the board, I believe his services are essential there.
And, um.
I would like to move to reappoint Iris Ramos as the, um, councilor, the chairman of the tree board.
As a full member of the.
As a full member.
Yeah, just as a full member, but they decide, they, they pick their chair. And, um, that's my agreement.
I would like to nominate Cheryl Mills. To the tree board.
A second.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bailey.
Mm-hmm.
Um, would, do you want to keep her as an alternate member or pull her up to a full member?
No, full member.
Full member.
Yeah, I agree with that decision.
Can you restate that formally, please?
I move to recommend Cheryl Mills to full voting number of the tree board.
Second.
Thank you.
All right, so we have, um, Iris Ramos nominated by Richardson, Jacob McGellarroy by Hines, and Cheryl Mills. Um, by Council member Brummer. Any discussion? I, I have one, one thing, um, I have heard from, from one, um. Person in City Wood Creek who wasn't real happy with, with something that occurred, been about six or eight months ago now. Where, um, Mr. McGellarroy charged them some money for, um. For selecting certain trees that they weren't going to cut down, they were just going to, uh, trim. And, uh. And I've never gotten a good explanation from, uh, from city staff about why he was charged. And, uh, it's been a source, pardon? He, there was no real reason that we could see that he was charged. Uh, it may have been, uh, a misunderstanding. But, uh, he was charged nonetheless for just picking out some trees and putting some ridges on them, something on tap. And, uh.
So he expended personal time on a job site?
It wasn't really a job. Well, I think he, he was brought in as a, as a consultant type thing. He was told that it needed half that way, so. He came out, he said it, and then at that point, um, uh, charged a hundred and seventy-five dollars for, uh, looking at the trees, but not doing anything else. And. Did, did the citizen think that it was the city's, city, sending a city person? Yes. Because we don't do that. I know, but that's, that was. That was a misunderstanding between the citizen and Mr. McGellarroy, they didn't work out, yeah. That's not, that's not a city problem, that's been too. The city didn't send him out. I mean, he thought he was going out on a job. And if the citizen was confused, that, you know, that's a service the city is gonna, gonna do, and he contacted Mr. McGellarroy to do that, I don't see why. I don't get that. I think he was referred, um, by, I don't know who exactly, but it was, um, I don't know how he was referred, but he was referred. And when he came out, that's what he did, and.
Well, if you'd like to privately pass that person's name to me.
Sure.
Wake up as an honest man, and his consultation fee is a hundred and seventy-five dollars, and regularly charges that. Um, personally, I would like to handle this privately, considering that you have now brought money into a discussion that did not involve money previously. And so, uh, we can resolve that personally.
Okay.
And I, yeah.
All right, I'll call a question.
Okay.
I'll call a question, and please go ahead.
So voting on moving Cheryl Mills to a full voting member of the tree board. Council member Krista Richardson.
Aye.
Mayor Lieutenant Deborah Hines.
Aye.
Council member Lenea Bailey.
Aye.
Council member Chris Grimmer.
Aye.
Council member Bob Hambert. And the motion to reappoint Iris Ramos as a full member of the tree board. Who was your second? That was you, Chris?
Yeah.
Iris Ramos? No, that's Chris.
No, I'm Cheryl.
No.
She was asking, yeah, that couldn't be.
Yeah, exactly, that's Iris.
Yeah, reappointing Iris Ramos as a full member of the tree board.
I'm sorry.
Council member Krista Richardson made the motion, and then I would ask.
Oh, oh, come on.
He's done.
I'll be back.
You're fine. Council member Bob Hambert.
Aye.
Council member Krista Richardson.
Aye.
Mayor Lieutenant Deborah Hines.
Aye.
Council member Lenea Bailey.
Aye.
Council member Chris Grimmer.
Aye.
And nominating, uh, making the motion to move to nominate Jacob McGellarroy to the tree board. Council member Chris Grimmer.
Aye.
Council member Bob Hambert.
abstaining.
Council member Krista Richardson.
Aye.
Mayor Lieutenant Deborah Hines.
Aye.
Council member Lenea Bailey.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, so, um, remaining our alternate positions, and I will tell you that, um. The only ones I have to make nominations on are for Parkland Recreation, uh, nominating, uh, Pat Rawlings and Monica Rasto. To serve as, uh, alternates on the Parkland Recreation Board.
Second.
Any discussion?
Oh, 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 oh.
I think you said it was the only one, so if you would like to add.
Well, he's, he's applying, I mean, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna pick Pat or.
For alternate for tree board.
I've got two alternates, I've got Pat and Monica.
We're on parks.
I know, you're on parks, because these are the.
Oh, oh, on parks.
But I just wanted to make sure you caught that all.
It's probably January, and it, you know, it's.
Catching up, yeah.
Happy New Year, yeah.
Lubricate that mental muscle.
That's why we have mayor pro tems, or mayors pro tems, I don't know, so, um, so anyway, on Parkland Recreation, we'll do the, take a vote on Parkland Recreation, please.
Mayor Lieutenant Deborah Hines.
Aye.
Council member Lenea Bailey.
Aye.
Council member Chris Grimmer.
Aye.
Council member Bob Hambert.
Aye.
Council member Krista Richardson.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, so moving to the tree board, um, it's actually my pleasure to nominate Jake Butler as an alternate, alternate member. Um, had a chance to work with him, talk to him over the last several months when he was a hell of a guy. Um, you know, really good guy, um, great landscaper, you know, knows his stuff. I think he'll be an excellent, uh, addition to the, to the tree board. And I, I just, I don't know how, I still, I just didn't have him in front of me, so, thank you very much, so, nominating Jake Butler to alternate position for the tree board.
Second.
Discussion, call the roll.
Okay. Council member Lenea Bailey.
Aye.
Council member Chris Grimmer.
Aye.
Council member Bob Hambert.
Aye.
Council member Rich, Rich, I'm sorry, Krista Richardson. And Mayor Lieutenant Deborah Hines.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Well, that concludes that part of the agenda. Um, move over to item number nine, establish appropriate action to adopt Resolution twenty-four, one, you know, one. Which updates the council meeting rules of procedure. Um, can I give a little background on that? City man.
Yes, in the December meeting, um, we had this on the agenda. We talked about the changes that council members wish to have this brought back to them. One was the change of the second meeting of the month to four o'clock, and that is now in the, um. The document, the resolution, the other one was, um.
We still owe about the Friday one o'clock, right?
Yeah, Friday at one o'clock, they wanted to put Friday at one o'clock in here, um, that was done, and we also cleaned up some language. I think on one C as well, were the three changes.
Mayor, may I? I move to adopt Resolution twenty-two-four dash oh-one, ten, oh-one, council meeting rules of procedure.
Oh, that's good.
Mayor, may I?
Um, second, I give it the, I think I've moved on.
Please go ahead. Um, I move to amend Resolution twenty-two-four dash oh-one, ten, oh-one, by striking the following under Rule One, meetings, regular and special, section C. Strike no more than two, and then strike per council member subject to mayor's discretion.
One second.
Thank you. Mayor, may I? There are several reasons why I consider the previous wording problematic. One, this is council's agenda and council's meetings. Council should be not place arbitrary restrictions upon themselves which could be material with serving of the citizens of our fair city. There is a dynamic shift with the previous wording, as while it, it places limits on council's ability to place items on their own agenda. It does not place the same limits on staff's ability to submit items. Should we clear it? I'm not suggesting that there should be limits on staff submissions to council's agenda. I'm merely pointing out that the previous language, staff held more rights to council's agenda than council does on this issue. It should be at a minimum equity. Removing the restriction on council only being able to submit two items would help solve this. It has previously been argued that the reason for limiting council members' ability to submit items was in an effort to limit the time of council meetings. I think the focus of this argument is missing the point. We are here in service to our citizens. We have each made a commitment to fulfill this role as representatives. We only meet twice a month to do the work of serving the people. Placing arbitrary limits on the time we are willing to do the work is counter to the commitment we have all chosen to take on. There may be issues that require more than two items to be submitted. An example of that is when up. As when council is required to approve specific and certain language and pass separate ordinances in order to obtain the community development law grant.
True. Um, when we did this, the intent was indeed to, uh, limit the time, because we've had some, um, meetings with upwards of something like twenty different items. Um, not often, but we did, and we went until it was late, it's eleven o'clock at night, because of the, the high number that we have. If we leave it just the way it is, the mayor still has the ability to be able to limit us to, to two per. If he wants to make it three, he can do that. It is his prerogative, even as it sits down, or, or if it were his prerogative, but then we also have the ability to, um. To have somebody accountable to the agenda as far as its, its size, rather than just leaving it up to city council, uh, members to make it as many as they want. Um, I think that what we have right now is, is appropriate, and leave it in the mayor's favor in terms of being able to. Uh, uh, either limit or increase the number of, of agenda items that each council member can report.
Mayor, pro tems?
I'll try to be simple. This limiting is arbitrary and unnecessary. Being the main council member who has submitted more than two items in the past several years. I'm never submitting frivolous items. Um, every single time, it is something. Um, every single time it is something relevant to the city, often important business that needs to occur. I'm often asked to submit items by other people. So this specifically impacts me and I see it unnecessary, especially because if the agenda is long, then we have the ability to request items be bumped to a future agenda, which was our previous process and we rarely have disagreements about that. Um, so firstly, I feel like it's excessive language, arbitrary limits, it's unnecessary and, um, it kind of just can create excessive, like, work for you in the sense of, I've submitted more than two items, can I please? And you have to email, yes, you can, or it's just kind of, I don't know, I can't say unnecessary, but I'm running out of words, so that's how I feel about it.
Um, when we discussed this previously, it was, uh, as Mr. Hammer has, has discussed, the limit our agenda, but it gave you the property, the ability to add additional items if it was necessary and relevant. So, because we'd already discussed this, I think it should stay the same way it is. We, we'd already worked this through and thought this was an appropriate, uh, format.
Uh, I'm in agreement that I think limiting it is a little, uh, unnecessary because, um, as was thought of earlier, when somebody wants to add something to the agenda, there's a difference for it and, um, I think everybody, all the council members should have the ability to, you know, make the decision themselves how many they want to add because I think they'll have a, you know, decision maybe in that process.
May I have my second round?
Then.
Um, so the discussion is limiting council members to two items in order to reduce the agenda, in order to reduce the time spent on the agenda. In one of my arguments previously, I said, this limit is not being placed on staff. So for instance, we have it in front of us, an example of an agenda. Now whether we consider this long or not is not my point, but there are eleven items submitted by staff, only two by council. And this is council's agenda. This isn't staff's agenda, this isn't the mayor's agenda, this is council's agenda. This is us coming together to decide what topics are we taking up for the citizens. And I believe any and all topics should be discussed or brought forward. Again, as our, our council member, Mayor Protem Hines, has pointed out, in the past, we have easily bumped items to a future agenda.
Can you? Uh, that is what the poke phone process is, that's what the table process is. Um, that's the point of those services. And unless we're also striking the three hour time limit, that already serves the function of limiting the times of meeting. Additionally, the number of items on a meeting is inconsequential because there can be at times eight items in the consent agenda and we don't discuss them, so it's, it's an art, I mean, it's, it's random, you know? And when we talk about the fact that we discussed this and agreed upon this previously, I would like to refer to state that I did not agree upon it. And I voted and that might be a vote of aye or yes, but I also advocated in that meeting against it. Um, with that in mind, we also had a different makeup of council. So the whole point of bringing this resolution back up for discussion recently was under the principle that we do have a new council and a new council has the right to decide how they should hold meetings.
Um, one other thing was the three hour time limit is also at the mayor's discretion. And what we've done in the past is, uh, I mean, in the recent past, it had, it's only been about five or six months. Um, we have limited and, and in having good management and we've had some, some pretty good meeting management in the last several months, um, based on this. And if anybody would want to have another agenda item, they're usually welcome to have that. It hasn't changed that much and I don't think that we've had, uh, too much of a restriction on, um, on the agenda items in the last several months.
May I ask a point of information to the citizens? I have a question, so I have a, a list of agendas, amendments. Where would you like, would you vote on each amendment first and then I make the next amendment or would I just?
That's usually the, is where to do it.
Thank you.
So we would vote on each amendment and then, and then at the end it would be?
The name of the amendment, yes. Thank you.
Um, you know, it's held decision, you know, as, as a council. Um, I will weigh in because I thought it was a bad idea when we limited it to two. Um, although I did kind of like the three hour limit, um, and they, they, they work together. You know, if you've got, if you've got more hours on the agenda with a three hour limit, you know, then it does tend to self-regulate. If you have, I mean, we've had long, we had a large number of agenda items and got through it in an hour and a half. So it, it's kind of arbitrary and I'll have two, three, four hours. I mean, I don't know what other cities do, but I, I, you know, I, I think it would be fairly odd to have, you know, limits on the number of agenda items. If you've got something that the citizens have been, you know, working with you and you need to get it on the agenda, then, you know, sort of hard to say, well, I can really talk about that now if I already got two items on the agenda. The other thing is that, um, uh, we were, you know, pretty careful with that mayor's discretion in there. Um, because I think everybody knows that if you've got three or four important items, I'm not okay. So it's kind of, the two is sort of arbitrary, so, you know, my take. Further discussion, I think everybody's had their chance to speak, we can go ahead and vote on the amendment.
Councilmember Bob Hammer.
No.
Councilmember Krista Richardson.
Aye.
Mayor Chris Timmerhahn.
Aye.
Councilmember Lenea Bailey.
No.
Councilmember Chris Grimmer.
Aye. Amendment passed, please?
Mayor, please, please. I amend resolution twenty-two-four-oh-one-ten-oh-one by striking rule one, meetings, regular and special, section D, in its entirety.
I'll second for this, Captain.
Thank you. Um, the length of regular and special meetings are not to exceed three hour time limit per meeting at the discretion limit. That's what we're discussing. Again, this is an arbitrary limit we are placing upon ourselves which could hinder our work for the people of this city. Any council member during the meeting are free to propose an item to a future meeting, but to put a time restriction into policy for, for all future council meetings assumes that all council members are unwilling to take the time of a meeting it may take to address a very specific issue that may require our time. The time limit restriction also has a result of limiting a possible in-depth discussion about an issue before us. We may be limiting what solutions or fresh perspectives may come out of our discussions because each of us are more focused on the self-imposed time limit of the whole meeting rather than working towards solutions and concessions, consensus on individual issues. Some complex issues simply require our dedication to work out all aspects. We have adopted Robert's rules for our meetings. This already creates a time limit for our discussions. I see no reasonable purpose to further restricting council's ability to explore important issues by writing it into policy.
This was always something I was sort of turn, torn on. Because in principle, I don't approve of arbitrary limitations or the rushing of conversation. I feel like especially when we were hyper-focused on how long everybody spoke and how often they spoke, we were sort of constricting good discussion, which makes for good decision-making and ultimately we are charged with good decision-making for the city. I do however, watch you all in your body language and our, um, when we start slipping up in the hour of the evening and the, like, concept of what hour we're driving home and the reality that it is, you know, very uncomfortable to sit in those chairs over there specifically, these are a little better. Uh, so I don't necessarily agree with striking the concept of a time limit at all. And I would like to discuss whether the concept of changing the wording here to be that the mayor may end a meeting at three hours, that they have that option, right? And so, um, I think that that preserves the concept of we have an out if needed, but for example, we've already been in a meeting, we were, we were at the three hour mark and we were almost done with the meeting and it was like this would obligate us to end it. And it, but that's why we added the at the discretion of the mayor because it was a random, you know, we needed to, to keep going, right? So he was able to do it, so I just feel like if we shifted this wording a little bit where, you know, we may call it at this time, I mean, you know, it, because, I get that at the discretion of the mayor, that the mayor gets to decide in the moment. But the way that it's worded, it's already a given that we're gonna end at three and then only you get to decide if we continue on or not versus council maybe taking a vote whether or not they would like to continue the meeting. That way it's more of a group setting, right? In which you were really good about asking how we feel, but it's not a, you know, formal setting. So again, I could go either way on this one. I, we could also extend it to four hours and that just, I don't want to be in a meeting over four hours. I just don't. Um, so that, that's my two cents on it. I'm, I could go either way, I'm on the fence. Um, but you know, the last comment I'll make is that every single council member up here is allowed to leave whenever needed and you're allowed to get up to go to the bathroom whenever needed. You can make a cup of coffee, you can bring snacks. So we're not miserable and tied and chained into these chairs. If you can't attend the meeting, you simply don't come. And I know that means you are excluded from decision-making and that's unfortunate, but, um, you're not a special, so.
Really?
Well, um, I, uh, I think if we need to go longer, it can be at the discretion of the mayor. And when this first came up, it was more because people go, oh my God, the meetings are so long. We're trying to make them finite. And also with people leaving, I remember one time was, remember did leave an important vote was came later. Also that citizens, they're not gonna sit through three or four hours of meetings uh, or three hours if their item is way at the end, you know? So I think part of this was to be sensitive to the citizens saying, we want you here. We want you to participate and maybe we just make sure we shuffle items the more administrative or toward the end. But I think that was one of the reasons that we wanted to encourage citizen participation.
I just, the second, I, I do agree with, with the idea of that citizen participation part. Citizen participations, that participation, just to, for people in the audience who are watching right now, um, electronically, uh, they may not want to sit through four, three or four hours. And the people who are actually here right now, I can imagine what goes through their minds at the same time that, uh, I haven't caught them looking at their watches yet. I have a clock that I can see, but at some point, uh, it gets to be too much, I think. And for, for good meeting management, that's part, a part of what the mayor does and he has the discretion to change that if he so chooses. Do you think that?
I am slightly concerned as far as people keeping focus and, and keeping, you know, on how they're handling, things are allowed to continue, um, you know, into the four hour mark. Um, I do like the idea of the mayor being able to make the decision and have a, leave it up to his discretion if the, um, meeting should go beyond the three hour limit, so.
Um, um, I, I'd just like to, to say something. Um, I, I mentioned before that this is one of the things I was not really against when, you know, we're discussing before. Um, one of the reasons is that, you know, my, in my professional life, you know, one of the things that I tried to do with an agenda was not only set an ending time, but set an ending time for each item. You know, we're gonna talk about this for fifteen minutes and then we move on to the next topic. Can't really do that in a situation like this, but we can, we can keep our eye on, on the clock out of respect for each other and our families and, and our citizens who, who want to partake in this. Um, and then again, you know, if the mayor's discretion is, hey, you know, if this is a really good discussion, um, if no one has any objections, I would like to keep the discussion going. And I don't really think that we're gonna get a hold of, and flip back on that and tell them.
All right, set you up. Quick one. Um, so I would like, I found, um, Mayor Protem Hines is possible working something that I think is really good, which is we don't, we, we state that the mayor can close the meeting at three hours versus it's already decided for us. That I think will cover all the concerns people may have about a lengthy meeting, but I also want to point out that, um, citizens watching at home have the ability to pause videos. Um, so I don't concern myself too much about that topic. Um, citizens, and Councilmember Bailey was talking about, well, citizens are here and they may wish to speak to an item and their item is until later in the agenda. Citizens can announce it early, it's like, hey, I'm really interested in this thing. We graciously, many times in the meeting go, oh, well, let's move that thing up, let's move it to the top. Um, but when we're talking about the citizens sitting here presently, obviously it's a small handful of people we're concerned about. I am more concerned about the topics and the solutions that we're coming up with for the entire city public. Um, so that's why I, I, I know that when I sit here during a meeting and I have this constant looking at that clock, oh, three hour goal, I do not speak on items now where previously I might have, I'm like, hey, I had this idea about this topic. I don't now, I'm picking and choosing what I find valid enough to discuss. And I don't like that. I think we should all have, we have valid ideas that we need to bring into this discussion. And so I would pose, if, if Mayor Protem Hines would be willing, is amend my amendment with specific wording that we're taking.
Your amendment is to strike the whole piece.
Yes.
Yes, but she can amend that too.
Or that to amend?
Excuse me.
This is all Robert's rules questions, not really legal questions, um, of the guide, might be a guide under the process, but.
You can withdraw your motion and make a new amendment.
Well, technically, it's, hey, it took, and then, yeah.
Technically under Robert's, so technically under, I'm not a parliamentarian, all right? I just know Robert's rules through my twenty-seven years of dealing with the city. But under Robert's rules, once a motion has been made and it's been seconded, it belongs to the body. You can't just withdraw it, you have to have a vote on the motion. You can, you made a motion to strike it, it was seconded, there was discussion. She can make a motion to amend your motion to change it, that can be seconded, that can be debated, that can be voted on and then we go back to your main motion, your motion, that would be then voted on based on her amendment and then it would be part of the main motion. I mean, that's how confusing it gets under Robert's rules of order, which is why I'm not a fan of Robert's rules of orders being used in small bodies like this, but that's how it works under Robert's. And we, we do apparently follow Robert's rules of order as revised. So no, you cannot just withdraw your motion under Robert's rules of order.
Why should, you can if.
Nope, you cannot.
Chair hasn't restated it.
Nope.
So it's very confusing, it's been seconded by, by the.
Can I just say that I'm not confused on this? We have frequently done this process where somebody has made a motion and then we amend it. So even though the motion was to strike, my amendment can undo the strike.
Yeah.
And then that alters the main motion permanently.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not a parliamentarian. Yeah, I mean, I'm not a parliamentarian and how it's, how it's actually done, I mean, I'm just giving you my recollection of Robert's rules. How it's actually done is subject to the mayor determining whether or not it's appropriate or not. And then this body challenging the decision that's made, I mean, that's how that.
I amend.
My amendment.
Yeah, you're proposing amendment to the amendment.
Yes, rather than strike, change the wording for rule one, item D, to state at the three hour mark, the mayor may request that the meeting be brought to a conclusion.
I second.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure for clarity that if this motion passes, the language has changed and then we vote on the main motion and if the main motion fails, hers does not, her does not.
Everything.
Everything fails. So her motion that she just made.
Right.
Would if they say do not strike D, her motion, her motion does not go in and so nothing is done.
Right. We've had that problem before. Yes.
Yeah, so if, if the converse.
So not only do you have to vote for the additional language, you also have to vote on the main motion of striking D.
Yes, sir.
So you have two competing amendments in there. You have to add language and you have to strike D. So how can you have a D if you're going to strike it?
Sir.
Yes.
It's very simple. I addressed that in the first part of the statement. I said, rather than striking, we will change the language. And so what will happen is that when we move to the main motion, if this is approved, when we move to the main motion, we will restate it as amended so that avoids that confusion. The mayor will say, if it passes, right, I'm projecting passing for the time being, please don't let it influence your decisions. If this passes, then the main motion changes to rather than strike, the language will be changed to at the three mark, hour mark, the mayor may call the meeting to conclusion. He will restate that so that when we get to the main motion, we are all clear what we are voting on, that it was if that amendment passes, no longer be a strike. Otherwise, we can just vote on the strike right now. I mean, you know, you.
Well, thirty minutes.
Yeah, so we've moved past that point.
And it's been restated.
Just, yeah, I was just trying to.
Do I have a second on Ibrox and mine? I did. Okay, so the amendment is to, is to not strike completely, but to change the wording so that it states at the three hour mark of the meeting, the mayor may call the meeting to conclusion.
No. Yes.
Your, your, her exact words were that her motion moved to make a motion, but I'm sorry, the motion was to move to amend, make an amendment that rather than striking rule one, item D, change the language to state at the three hour mark, the mayor may request that the meeting be concluded.
All right. Just as a comment, I think that the way it's stated here is just fine and we put it in in the hands of the mayor on regular weeks as needed. And that's what at the discretion of the mayor means.
May I speak to why I'm presenting this one last time? As it states, the meeting automatically ends at three hours and so we have to then go through the process of deciding to continue the meeting and having that discussion, which is not relevant to the actual meeting. Through the change of this language, at the three hour mark, the mayor continues to have the discretion, but he doesn't have to interrupt the meeting to ask everybody whether or not we want to end. He can just, there's three items. And then this also allows him at three thirty or, you know, the three thirty mark, say, guys, we, we passed the three hour mark, we've gone thirty minutes, I don't think we're going to resolve any time soon, I'd like to call this meeting, right? So that's the difference is that we have, rather than having arbitrary cut point that then we're negotiating whether or not we want to go in between and it interrupts the discussion of that item, we can now continue to proceed. If it's going too long and we have too many items, then the mayor is like, look, guys, we've got ten items, we're not going to get through them, let's call it tonight, let's postpone the rest of these. So it's, to me, it's what interrupts the meeting, the flow of the discussion, what to focus on. For me, the purpose of our meetings is not to focus on how long, you know, that that all gets in the way of the point. The point is, what do we need to do for our city and how do we do it?
Yeah, I'm just going to say that I'm not going to be the mayor forever, but as long as I'm mayor, you know, I am always going to use my discretion to keep a meeting going if it's active. I think that the, I think that striking it, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't support striking it and I don't support your amendment because it's already there. That's all I'm going to say. Further discussion?
Just clarification, sorry to bring this up. If you vote on Councilmember Heinz's motion says strike the first, the original one, then we go to vote on the original one. Are we not amending that somehow and we'll have to vote on that again?
Hers is an amendment to my amendment. So what's, we haven't voted on the amendment part yet.
Right.
So what, if we vote and council member's motion passes, then it becomes part of my amendment. Then we vote on my amendment as changed by a council judge. And then whether that passes or not is at some point.
Okay, thanks, Ben.
So the result would be if Councilmember Heinz's version doesn't pass, my amendment stands as presented.
Then it is voted.
And then it's voted on.
All right. If there's no further discussion, we'll vote on Mayor Proton Heinz's amendment to, to at three hour mark, the mayor may request that the meeting is ended.
Okay, so how this is going to be recorded is that this, what we're voting on right now is we're voting on Mayor Proton's amendment to Councilmember Grummer's amend, second amendment on this motion.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So we just voted to stretch that from amendment to not.
To the, Mayor Proton, Deborah Heinz. Councilmember Linnea Bailey, aye. Councilmember Chris Grummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hambert.
No.
Councilmember Krista Richardson, aye.
All right, so that amendment passes. So we take the vote.
On Chris's amendment.
And so amendment. What we're doing is voting on what just passed because it becomes part of my.
They're voting on the same thing twice.
Right, we are voting on the same thing twice, really.
Amendment two A and amendment two B.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
All right, so on Chris's amendment to strike rule one, made regular meetings and special meetings, section D in its entirety.
No, no, it's amended, amended because his, his amendment is now amended, so we're, we're actually voting really on her amendment again.
Okay.
As it directly relates to his, is that right? Yes.
Yes.
So essentially the same vote.
Councilmember Krista Richardson, aye. Mayor Proton, Deborah Heinz, aye. Councilmember Linnea Bailey, aye. Councilmember Chris Grummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hambert.
No. All right. So the amendment as amended.
Mayor, mayor.
I'm watching the clock, go ahead.
My amendment resolution twenty twenty four oh one, ten oh one, the paragraph under section rule five, procedure for submitting agenda items by striking second Friday and replacing it with Monday, comma, the week.
And so no later than one P M. of the Monday instead of Friday?
So it's basically going back to the previous ten days that we had in our last version of this.
Can you restate it one more time? You struck second Friday, you added Monday and then a week?
No, I so in order to do the language right, strike second Friday and replace it with Monday, comma, the week.
Okay. I'll second. I guess I already did. Can I ask some more questions?
Thank you. Council meets approximately every two weeks, fourteen days. During these council meetings, the public has the right to bring to our attention issues that they see as important. Council is limited in how we can respond to such public comments, but one way we are allowed to respond is to postpone or propose to place the subject on the agenda for a subsequent meeting. Since council meetings are held on Wednesdays, this only gives a council member a day and a half to submit an item in order to timely respond to our citizens. What I'm actually proposing is returning to the ten days before a council meeting, which at least gives a council member Thursday, Friday, the weekend and half of Monday to put together an item addressing citizens' concerns. This allows us to be fluid and flexible and respond timely. While we are, we all support our mayor and city manager's time in compiling council's agenda, we must balance that with council's ability to respond and serve the public and their concerns. Remember that that is what we are here to do, to serve the people of our very city. Now for a little history lesson. When I first came on the council, the agenda deadline for submitting items was seven days before a council meeting and our previous city manager posted the council agenda on the Friday before the Wednesday of council meeting at or before four P M. when the office closed. He made sure to get the work done before he left the building. Council has then moved this deadline to ten days before a council meeting to help facilitate the mayor and the city manager getting the agenda posted by the seventy-two hour deadline. But moving the agenda submission deadline to two weeks, fourteen days before a council meeting is not something I support. Ten days is sufficient. Again, we are holding council meetings every two weeks.
This decision when initially brought up was privately done and we were requested to comply and we have been, we've been operating with this schedule for a while, yet the agendas are still getting out just as late. The entire goal when we have bumped these submission dates up has been that we are able to submit the agenda to the public sooner, which has not occurred yet with either of these two changes, which I'm disappointed in and that is my primary goal with any kind of early submission process for council. With that being said, I do respect the concept of honoring a staff's request for what they need and if this is what they believe they've needed, then that is why I was on board with it previously. I, I will be honest, though, as somebody who is frequently submitting items and working on items, this has been a little bit crippling mostly because Fridays aren't a day that I typically spend working on city business personally. And with that being said, because, because the end of the week is there's so much going on, you're trying to wrap up, starting fresh Monday and knowing I have a submission due is a little bit different. With, you know, with that being said, the other challenge that has personally presented me, for example, this evening, has been that decisions made this evening will be directly impacting an item I'm submitting on Friday, which means I have a quick turnaround to not only edit the item, but consult with my fellow council member who's working on it and then get my item in by the deadline, which is a pretty big crunch. And I know that I could plan better and I could, you know, just anticipate and just, you know, I get it. But my one concern is the agendas have never once gotten out earlier, even though we keep bumping it up and making it more and more difficult for a council member to anticipate what is needed on an agenda and get it in, because that's what actually happens. I have to know what I want for an agenda almost a month in advance, do all of the work, all of the planning and meet this deadline, right? Which some might think, yes, you should, but the reality is, is many of our items are sort of erupting in the moment and we're like, okay, we need to address that, you know, and it would be good to address that in a timely manner. For example, we even had a citizen tonight say, I'm disappointed this isn't on the agenda already, right? Even though we have the holidays and I just simply didn't have the time for that quick of a turnaround from that agenda to this one to get that item in. I would have had to have driven around the entire city and written a report in two days. Not possible. Not in a, to create something good.
I'll just, I would add that the, the move back to Friday, I mean, it's like, you've got two weeks, whether it's on Monday or whether it's on, you've got basically the same, same timeframe. Everybody sort of puts things off and, and then like, you know, puts their, their agenda items in like that's been the, that's been the thing. It's like they all come in Monday before one o'clock or Friday before one o'clock. I mean, y'all, y'all put it off and go get it in and then, and then Kevin and I, you know, have to scramble, you know, to put an agenda together with the hopes of getting it out on time. Now, you're going to do the mayor pro temp going forward and you're going to be on all those agenda meetings. So if it's, if it's on Monday, if Monday's the deadline and now we have to push it to like Wednesday in order to get it all together and you're in that meeting, you're going to see what, how this often is made. It's not pretty. So just, I'm just, just saying the truth. I am a, you know, it's, it's, you know, Kevin and I have generally gotten together on Tuesday.
Mm-hmm.
And, and, you know, hashed it out, everything's good. We get the, I mean, part of the deal is that we do have a, a lousy agenda program. Both the submission process is whack and then the agenda building software is whack. That's all going to change. And, and maybe it'll get better and maybe, you know, maybe, you know, we'll be able to, to pull this all off easier, but it's like, but having, you know, thinking of it as, okay, well, we've got, you know, everything's coming in Friday, you can look at it, you know, I've got the weekend to sort of plan it out, maybe talk to a council member, see if there's any issue, which we've done this last time. It just, it gives me a little bit more time, so I'm being selfish here. I've been, I've, I've been on both sides of it as a council member and as the mayor kind of put together the agenda. And I mean, it, it is thoughtful for me, so that's, that's my, my statement. Selfish as it is. I was initially believing that, that moving it up to Monday at one o'clock would give it things, but then it got me to remembering some of my past professional experiences and it, it's almost like when you, when you are in the process of going on vacation, how do you back plan that to a certain point? And this is the same sort of thing that they, with, with this agenda. If we know it's due on Friday, then we start working on that on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday to have it ready to go on Friday. And if we got it, and I was really surprised, to tell you the truth, on the twenty ninth this last time for agenda submission, that won't happen again. I will remember in the cognitive of what the day is that it's due and then plan accordingly based on that. And if it's something that comes up at the last minute, I have to say, I'm sorry, it's not on the agenda because I may not have known that soon enough or I couldn't prepare for it soon enough. But now I think that I can because I better understand this, this whole process of how it goes. So I, yeah, I, I think it's, it'll be appropriate if we work at planning a little bit further ahead rather than at the last minute.
I was listening to Councilmember Heinz. If our meeting is Wednesday and we have a comment from the public, from our citizens, a day and a half is not long enough to respond to that, but if we've got the weekend, my weekends are not terribly exciting. But if we've got the weekend, my weekends are not terribly exciting. So that way I've got by Saturday, Sunday to work on something to submit it by Monday morning. And if it's submitted Friday, does that mean staff is working Saturday and Sunday? So it seems that it allows us more time and really it's only taking a little time away from staff. So I think Monday is a good thing.
Um, since I don't have much experience for submitting agenda items, just listening to everybody's point of view on everything, I, I agree mostly that, you know, you know, if a citizen is submitting or bringing something up at a meeting, that is a little bit turnaround to have it in by Friday. And then also, you know, for council members, it's giving us almost three days, whereas for employees or staff, it's, you know, eight hours of work time. So I would be more inclined to move it to Monday.
All right. Phone call, please. Could you, could you state the motion, please?
So shall I do it for you? It's to strike second Friday and replace it with Monday, comma, the week.
Council member Lenea Bailey?
Aye.
Council member Chris Germer?
Aye.
Council member Bob Hambert?
Aye.
Council member Christopher Richardson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Denver Heinz?
Aye.
All right, the amendment passes. We'll go back to the Monday.
Council member Chris Germer?
Are we voting on the motion? Is this main motion now?
Yes.
What's the main motion?
Unless you have another amendment.
The main motion has, has amended.
Is to adopt resolution 2024.
Okay, it's amended.
Just the whole, yeah, so we're, we're adopting the resolution. Rules of the road, yeah. And with the amendments that we voted on tonight.
Sorry, I can't talk.
Council member Chris Germer?
Aye.
Council member Bob Hambert?
Aye.
Council member Christopher Richardson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Denver Heinz?
Aye.
Council member Lenea Bailey?
Aye.
All right, so if it passes, I will staff it up, make those, make those changes and bring it back.
In February?
In two weeks. Well, no.
We just passed it technically the way that was worded, so it doesn't come back unless we ask for it to, unless legal has an issue with that process, so.
There's some local rule, every part of it. No, there's not any local rule, but, you know, we voted on this thing, though. We, we, it's come up 18 times. And it keeps coming up, you know, being amended and it keeps coming back. And it's like it was a bad penny.
Yeah, can't come back now. That vote, done.
I, I mean, if we agree that this is it, these are the rules. You know, so y'all were just doing the, could do where you come into the Friday, the first thing as a, as a, as a paper? Because that was the discussion, you think, okay, but we, we set Friday at 1:00. You know, so what happened, that wasn't, you know, set in stone, that that was y'all were doing it in the paper, you know, you, whoop, you still took. Anyway, so, okay, so let's go to the books. Okay, we're going to move to item number 10, city manager rule. This is the title nine, chapter 93, fire prevention and protection. I think we needed to make a couple of, of legal changes on that, get it?
Yes, it was.
Point of information, could we get motions before discussion starts? And may I make that motion for?
Go ahead.
Move to approve ordinance 2024-01-10-03, amending the City of Wood Creek code of ordinances at title IX. General Regulations, Chapter 93, Fire Prevention and Protection, Providing for the Prohibition of Open Burning with Exactions.
Second.
I want to hand over to.
Same then, I have a rule.
Uh, this was a ordinance suggests, or the council wanted to approve. The previous language was given to the city attorney. They had some edits on that. And so it's bringing, it's bringing brought back to you with a, in a way that the city attorney will attest to more.
City manager, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Heinz?
Could we get a review of what changes were made? Because I did not find shark throughs, I mean, it's not, you know, I, I guess I should have taken both side by side and nitpicked it, but I didn't know if you had a list of why it was you brought this back up.
No, I don't know the changes. My recollection is it wasn't substantive, that it was written in a way that it created conflict in the ordinance itself. And there were areas that were unclear as to how they would be enforced. There were areas that included things that said it could be enforced, but it really wasn't an enforcement provision. So I just took it, left it the same substantively and put it in a form for clarity and so that it made sense. But there's no, to my recollection, there could be effective changes from what was provided by the original.
We have the chairperson here. Could we request that the other thing to say that we?
No, you can speak. I haven't seen the changes, so I haven't reviewed the castle.
Because, I mean, I gotta be honest, I read through it and nothing caught my attention in, in that I had, had prepared the ordinance for council previously. So there wasn't an initial red flag in me preparing for this meeting and so that's why I asked. I would also, I guess, was hoping to learn something about how we should better prepare the ordinances in the future to avoid that kind of redundancy, you know? But if there's nothing specific to educate me on, then I guess I'm at a loss there.
I'm happy to sit down with you afterwards. If there was any proposed substantive change or included in the draft in a, in a memo form and said, this is not legal or this can't be enforced, and I would have, that would have been a document that was in front of me. That's why I'm saying, my recollection, there was no, no substantive change because there's no memoing from me that would say that there was a substantive change.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. We, we're learning how you operate, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Discussion? Throw the motion?
Council member Chris Germer?
Aye.
Council member Bob Hambert?
Aye.
Council member Christopher Richardson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Denver Heinz?
Aye.
Council member Lenea Bailey?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion on number 11, Title Nine, Chapter 94, fireworks. That's like the motion that we adopt ordinance. It is 2024-01-10-04, amending the City of Wood Creek code of ordinances on Title Nine, General Regulations, Chapter 94, fireworks, providing for the prohibition of open burning with exceptions.
Point of issue here with the title, what you just read, that's not the title of the chapter. There's a typo in the agenda item. So if you skip down to page 60, that is the actual title of the chapter. I don't know how much the semantics of reading that main motion matter and how they influence the ordinance. But the words that are a problem is after fireworks. It should state, providing for prohibitions of fireworks. It's, it looks like it was just copied over from the previous item accidentally.
Okay, where is the issue? I'm sorry.
On item.
Agenda, oh.
Eleven, after fireworks.
It's on.
That is incorrect in the title of the.
Okay, the ordinance itself states, an ordinance amending the City of Wood Creek code of ordinances, Article Nine, General Regulations, Chapter 94, parenthetical fireworks, cynical, and providing for prohibition.
Yeah, but that is what he should, that is what the motion should be stated.
Oh.
And the agenda item is incorrectly worded. And so what I was trying to correct was that statement so that we can make sure we don't have a conflict of what we pass with a motion verbally and what the chapter is actually titled.
Oh, yeah, I don't, I don't have any issue with, yeah. You know, I see what you're saying. The agenda item says, providing for the prohibition of open burning, as opposed to fireworks. But it does state the appropriate section number, Chapter 94, and fireworks. So this does give enough notice to the public of what's going to be done, so I'm comfortable with it.
Yeah. Can you just re, should we just re, like, can we just make sure the main motion is correct?
Absolutely.
Is all I'm asking.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance 2024-01-10-04, amending the City of Wood Creek code of ordinances of Title Nine, here in General Regulations, impairing, Chapter 94, air fireworks impairing, providing for the prohibition of fireworks.
All right. You have a motion on the floor?
Oh, I second. Or she already seconded, yeah.
Oh, yeah, there's, uh.
Yeah, it's quiet.
Here we go, a quiet motion at the end of the period is turned.
I, if I could since I made the motion. My only sad element about it is that I shouldn't go on sparklers. But I understand that once an inch is given, a mile will be taken. Leave it at that.
You know, that was heavily debated among ORC. And why we left it in there is because, funny enough, one of our members talked about how you research the statistics of what injures people the most.
For sparklers?
Sparklers are pretty high up there, yeah, because people tend to wave them around.
Poke them near people's bodies.
And there's also two kinds of sparklers, which, you know, the ones you buy at the Dollar General store for like birthday parties are completely different than the large pumps you get at the fireworks store. And those large pumps will burn considerably longer, so it drops, they present the same fire hazard. I mean, yes, I, I don't disagree with you and that's why we had a really lengthy debate and argument over what to include here and not. And then, you know, with that being said, so again, there's, you know, there weren't any substantive changes. You just wanted it in a different format. There were some things. My question is, and, you know, if I can't ask this right now, I understand if you need to stop me. These two chapters were part of a three-pack that we submitted. Should we be expecting that, that third coming out as well or?
Yeah.
Animals that you, Chris Germer, uh, whatever, do you want to be said, you know, like, you're working on a totally little.
Oh, okay.
It's the new, one of the new laws.
Oh, I understand. Yeah, okay. Got it. Thank you.
All right, any, any set on this?
Don't scare my dog.
Council member Bob Hambert?
Aye.
Council member Christopher Richardson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Denver Heinz?
Aye.
Council member Lenea Bailey?
Aye.
Council member Chris Germer?
Aye.
All right, so officially on the books. I don't remember 12 was, was on the agenda because it was, it was carried forward from the December meeting. But we've also had input from the city attorneys on, on Chapter 30, on the ordinance review committee, with the notation, so we do not need to, unless there's objection, bring up 12 and we'll move to 13. There's still essentially the same thing. So number 13, entertain a motion on amending the ordinance for the ordinance review committee.
Mayor, mayor? I move to adopt ordinance 2024-01-10-01 regarding amending Chapter 30, ordinance review committee, as seen in the handout.
Those, sir, is what we're looking at? Second.
Thank you. Please disregard the document in the pocket, the packet for the site, instead look at the handout.
Mr. Germer, may I have a copy of that, please? I didn't receive one. I don't know what you're, oh, thank you. I got it here.
I also emailed them earlier. But instead have a look at the handout that I have provided. This document expands and clarifies the wording on council's expectations regarding such things as terms of office, changing the word officers to the word chairperson, and that council committees are advisory and only make recommendations with council, et cetera. Much of the work I did here is an attempt to create a template, which I will. Sorry. Much of the work I did here is an attempt to create a template, which I will then use to clarify terms of office for council's other committees, which I will then bring before council for their consideration. One of the most important aspects of this new language is, is to include the concept that members remain in their seat until their reappointment or replacement is approved by council. Of course, they can always resign if that's going to be accepted. But that way a committee's business and your ability to have, to maintain a forum are not in jeopardy just because the November election just happened and we haven't been able to, you know, put it all together yet. When it comes to the resignation letters by members, I have expanded the language that the city secretary and the committee liaison are also given notice of the community resignation. I move to amend section, this is an additional, this is a small amendment, but I move to amend Section 30.76, Open Meetings Act by striking the word shall and replacing it with the word will in the first paragraph, which happens twice.
I second that motion.
Thank you. According to Chapter 551, the Opens Meeting Act General, governmental bodies must comply with Toma. Though, under the description of what a governmental body is in that chapter, it does not describe council's advisory boards because they are only advisory. But though council is required to meet Toma, it does not preclude council from requiring their advisory bodies to follow these best practices that create open and transparent government. To repeat, though council's advisory bodies are not required by Chapter 551 to follow Toma, there is nothing in Chapter 551 preventing council in working to ensure that all our advisory board bodies are open and transparent, which is what Toma does.
Have a comment if possible?
Comment on the amendment?
Uh, no.
Overall?
Just with some of the changes in here.
The amendment.
Okay.
I think we need to address the, the shall, will amendment.
Yeah.
Amendment, the, 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 I remember the document and then we can say. So I'd like to knock that off for doing that. Yeah, well, I think we shall. Vote.
But will we? Mayor Pro Tem Denver Heinz?
Aye.
Council member Lenea Bailey?
Aye.
Council member Chris Germer?
Aye.
Council member Bob Hambert?
Aye.
Council member Christopher Richardson?
Aye.
All right, the amendment passes.
Back up here, so on Section 30.73, Item E. So one of the primary reasons this chapter was brought back up, I'd like us to reconsider the word shall remind because that's an obligatory word, meaning the person would then have to like resign formally if they didn't want to stay on. And so I would like to propose a consideration and I'm not going to amend it yet. I would like to discuss it before we issue an amendment because then we have to vote on it whether we want it or not. So that we consider may, meaning we give the person the, they may remain on, right? And, and continue to serve until there's another appointment, but that they're not, you know, forced to do that if they don't want to. They can just naturally time out unless they agree to continue serving. Just because I know personally, I like to know there's a time limit to my commitments and that, that could go on indefinitely. And out of respect for that person's time, I would just like to give them the option for their service. And out of respect for that person's time, I would just like to give them the option for their service.
So you didn't make an amendment, I would have seconded it.
I know, I, I would like, you know, because City Manager Rule had a good point earlier with, when we get really messy and confusing, oftentimes there's problems. So I regret earlier that we amended an amendment, and I would like to things be a little more simple. And that's why I'm not issuing an amendment yet. I would like us to discuss that change, and then I can make, make it, if it sounds like we're moving forward with it. But there's no comment, will we?
So, if I understand you, basically, you're, you're saying that, that you would automatically time out unless you explicitly say that you'd like to continue?
Yeah, we email the person and say, you know, Mr. Miller, would you like to continue until there's a reappointment, like three, a month or two? So that the board can continue meeting through January and February. If we're not able to find an appointment by December, then Mr. Miller can be like, no, I'd like to go ahead and end my term. Versus this being that person's term doesn't end until the council figures out who's going to replace them, which in some ways could be indefinitely, and so then they're forced to resign.
Some of this, they wouldn't, they wouldn't have to resign. They just said, no.
The term ends. It's a way of knowing my term ends in December, whether, you know, you know, no matter, you know, I get to disguise that, not, oh, well, so I better go to that January meeting, that me, because what happens is a chairperson is like, we can't have our meeting unless you're there, and this person's like, I planned a vacation because my term's over, right? Like, that's my thinking in that request. Shall is a really strong word in ordinance, I've learned from previous attorneys. And so we have to be very careful when we use words like shall, may, and will.
Where is that exactly?
Item thirty dot seven three E.
I put line number on you so that you often actually refer to line number.
Sixty-one.
Oh, sixteen. I was going to ask if you wanted me to give you.
So you, you would like to change it from shall to will?
May.
And may. Okay.
Yeah.
I agree with you.
Okay, I, I would like to move that we amend line sixty-one from shall to may.
I second that. Do you have a comment?
I just wanted to comment. We aren't dealing with ball and gears, and so this is much finer, like.
Take the handcuffs off. Take it out, everyone. Any other discussion on that? You have a better amendment?
Councilmember Lainey Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Garm.
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hambrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Krista Richardson.
Aye.
Mayor Pretend Deborah Hines.
Aye.
Passing the amendments, leave. Still working on the main ordinance. No further discussion with, we already have a second.
On the main motion, yeah.
Yeah, this was today, I believe.
Yes.
Correct? Well, I even emailed it a while ago, too. This, this particular one.
The, what, what was originally known as packet is essentially all of this not in ordinance format.
See, no, it's, it's two different documents.
So it's two different documents.
Well, I know there's three different languages in the one that's in the packet and the one that's in the. I just want to make sure that everybody knows that, that the two documents are, there's more substantial stuff than just numbers on the page.
Mayor? I guess we're going to have to go into it since it's a brought up. So what I submitted was this because the city attorney gave it to me. There were some changes in the heading where it was referenced Chapter ninety-four, not Chapter thirty, so I made that a change. There are some other adjustments that I referenced. But it was, the city attorney put it into ordinance format. And that's what I submitted, except for that I did choose the wrong link, but I did say, this is the document I want. And then when we went to review the documents in, in advance, I said, no, that's not the one, this is the one, and that's what you have in front of you.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Are there any substantive changes as City Manager Rule reference that you could give us a brief summary beyond what you have already stated?
Substantive from what the city, the city attorney gave me?
Or even what's in this, what's, so.
Well, the packets, that, like an ancient document that.
I'm, I'm, I'm confused. You didn't do this with all the numbers on the side.
No, no, no.
I mean, it came, it came from the city attorney that, that provided to us. Yeah, proposed changes were provided to me, not in ordinance. All I did was take the proposed changes and put them in ordinance form. And the ordinance form that I put them in includes the legislative funding, includes the proper heading.
Right.
And then the way I do amendments, unless it's a complete repeal and replace, I under lock, notice the code amendment, the city code ordinances is hereby amended if follows with underlines being additions to the code and struck through to the deletions from the code. So any proposed additions are underlined, any proposed deletions are struck. That's how I do.
It was crazy. I, when I saw this document, I'm like, do this?
Yeah.
Really? Because if you notice on the previous agenda, I was doing two versions.
Right.
The edited version and then.
Yeah, that's the one that's completely made up more complicated.
Absolutely.
I just.
I enjoyed it since it was like informative for me to see this.
But can I just rethink my question one more time? I understand you made it more legal.
Okay, all right.
Right? And, and, but so my question ultimately is, should council members be concerned about any substance changes beyond making it more legally relevant and viable from what the lawyers submitted? Meaning, Mr. Garm, Councilmember Garm, when you receive the lawyer's document, what is any additional changes you made beyond what? Because basically, all the lawyer did, all Mr. Duck did, City Attorney's Act, was take the stuff that you have in your packet, combine it, and make it better.
Correct. And then what was in the original ordinance, what had happened was the thirty dot seven three Open Meeting Act section, that wasn't there, but it wasn't struck through, so I questioned on whether or not it was an error, so I put it back in.
Seven six.
Seven six.
So that.
Seven six, seven six.
So that was added not with.
Well, that was, that was added to the official document that we brought. The other thing I added was I included, when it came to resignations, I included the city secretary and the committee liaison.
That's under one.
That's ten and some.
Okay. But I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, it's come from, right, the only thing you added that's not currently underlined, there were some, there were some form changes that weren't substantive nature, like the heading, I believe, there was a mistake in the heading.
Yeah.
But it's my understanding that the only thing you added that is not currently underlying in what you passed out was you added this new thirty dot seven six Open Meeting Act that they are requiring.
Because it was in the original document.
Oh, it was in the original document.
But, well, so, okay, here's that weird thing. So the old agenda, the one that was structured that got just drafted, it had two documents. One didn't get the, the Toma in it, or like the next page.
Okay, and so the reason why I didn't include it is because.
You didn't see it.
Well, there were no changes to it.
Oh.
So there's no changes to it, we're not amending that, and so if we're not amending that, I'm not including it in the ordinance where, where something's being amended.
Okay.
I only include those provisions. So let's say, for example, you weren't amending Section thirty dash seventy-four. There were no changes to that. I wouldn't even included Section thirty dot seventy-four in this ordinance because there's no changes that are being proposed to be made to it.
So it wouldn't just vacate it because we.
No, no, because you're, the whole point is, you, the only thing that's being deleted are those things that are being struck through. So if Section thirty dot seventy-four is not on here and not being struck through, it's still part of your code.
Can I just applaud you for explaining that? First off, that wasn't clear, so thank you for taking the time to explain that. It was a very kind thing.
Yeah.
Second off, we have not had somebody that has given us this level of detail and expertise and municipal ordinance guidance ever. So this is a huge learning experience, and I just thank you.
Okay, yeah, you bet. And I'm, well, I, I, I actually come in assuming this is the way normal folks do things, and I noticed that it's not. But I've known this twenty-some years, so I've got some experience in how ordinance should be drafted. And so, yes, the reason why Section thirty dot seventy-six is not on there, not because I missed it, but because there were no changes being made to it. So it's not something that would be amended, so I'm not going to include any ordinance that is making amendments to the code because it'll still stay in place.
Okay.
Good to know that.
I just, my only comment is that, in the same way that, that if something says draft across it, it's very explicit that it is a draft, that when something is not included when we're doing all this, that at the end, if we include a note that says thirty point seventy-six is not included because we have made no changes, not as a part of the ordinance, but as a part of the information on what we're voting on.
A memo, okay.
It's a memo, that's all it is.
Okay.
And, and when we do that, it's clear that it's still within the ordinance, but yet it's not part of the, the body of the.
And I'm happy to include those provisions if it in. I'm happy to do whatever is correct, obviously. But like a really large ordinance, a really large code provision under a chapter that has multiple sections, and you're only making a change to one section.
Yeah.
I mean, why would we include all of those other sections to make your.
Then it would accept.
Right. Exactly. In shorter ones, I'm happy to include Section thirty dot seven six Open Meetings Act because that's all, no, okay. We'll, we'll all take care to make note that, you know.
Create some explicit statements.
Thank you. I could offer a place that we wanted to just like hold that, like a, I mean, if you're copying and pasting it every time you submit one, in the item submission cover sheet, you could just like, that line could just be there. Any section's not in this, because what Councilmember Garm is talking about, or, yeah. Beyond council understanding this right now in this moment, because we're getting this education, if we get a new council member, they're not going to understand it. If the public isn't watching this meeting, they might not understand it. So that little memo note on the cover sheet could be really helpful for avoiding conflicts in the future.
Okay, or, and maybe what I'll do is, I don't see the cover sheets, I don't track those, the staff drafts those, and I'm a little concerned about.
We don't track those.
Coming out, like, straight up takes.
It's from the, what happened with the new system?
So.
Who drafted the agenda memo? So whoever made it, but they put it on this, this, so they, they put in this information that you see the merge. They, they did this with their.
That's what I was saying.
Or, or the other thing I could do is, you know, include just a bracketed section that says no, like, that has the section number and no amendments. That way, there, you're not, we're not relisting the entire ordinance, the code section, but just a little bracket that says, so that you can know that that section's in there, but there's no changes to it. And that might be easier than, than trying to communicate into a, into a memo that I'm not having access to.
Right.
Right. And another, just so you know, I, I have a presentation. I do newly elected workshops all the time. And I have a PowerPoint presentation I give on ordinance drafting, and I'm happy to.
What are you doing, January twenty ninth?
It just, it kind of goes over the, the, the broad, the broad technical aspects of what, what's in an ordinance and what they mean and why they're in there and.
Excellent.
So, yeah.
Well, since we're talking about, you know, like, education, I don't want to get off the agenda, but you know, since we're getting an education on how this is done, this is part of the discussion for the twenty ninth chamber.
Then we can talk about. So anyway, everyone's comfortable with the numbers on the side?
Yeah, love it.
I love it. I mean, it's easier to make references.
And what kind of party, like? Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
My point is one.
All right. If, like, there's one more thing. If, if we hadn't gotten all of those explanations, I was inclined to vote no for this because of the lack of time limits that we had in terms of looking at it. It's not within the ten days, it's. But since we've had these explanations, I'm more, more, uh, there's a strong propensity for, for a positive vote. We're going to, we're going to work very hard to see this tonight. All right, prepared vote? On the main motion.
Councilmember Krista Richardson.
Aye.
Mayor Pretend Deborah Hines.
Aye.
Councilmember Lainey Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Garm.
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hambrich.
Aye.
Passing now, too. Thank you very much, everyone. There's a couple of announcements from me. One is that, I mean, we're already, we've already got messaging queuing up on the weather event for this weekend. Sunday, it's going to be really cool, but Monday.
Monday will be fifteen.
Wind chill, see around zero. Temperature may never break freezing, it's going to be down below teens. So we're getting the, the four P announcement after the thing, but also although many people that, you know, have seventy-two hour emergency supplies in, in hand, which is going to be the theme of the emergency fair when we, when we do that in March.
The city, something I haven't noticed?
Yes.
And the city, it's something I haven't noticed is there are, are channels.
Great, so that we can share it.
And then we'll, yeah, and we can do that. But that is something I just, it's already, it's already being done. But, but, you know, just, just check on your neighbors. You know, it's, it's not going to be, it's not going to be another, another Myron. But it's going to be cold and drought, as they say. And the other thing just to, to really come with an open mind on the twenty ninth of the retreat, I think it's going to be, just going to be very good. Our facilitator, his name is Stephen Foster, who I've known for many, many years, expert facilitator. This, this is a great guy, a great guy, you know, taking, still kind of, he's now a family man, but other than that, he, he's a, he's a pretty good guy, and we've got commitments from Attorney Exec's Office, from the IT group. We're going to invite the, the chairs of the, of the advisory boards, not for the whole time, but that, you know, like, like they go all, we don't need Charlie for all eight hours either, so we're going to, we're going to time it out, but y'all are invited to stay the whole time. So, and I think it'll be, I think it'll be very worthwhile. So thank you for your commitment, though.
Thank you.
I move the adjourn.